...meeting of the Serebo Board of Education. Ms. Board Secretary, has the meeting been appropriately advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Board Secretary, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Bakco? Mr. Bakco?
Testing, testing.
Mr. Bakco? Present. Mr. Michelle? Here. Mr. Syak?
Mr. Syak is absent, but his protege is standing here, so we're good.
Mr. Clark? Here. Mrs. Esposito? Present. Mr. Gondo? Here. Mrs. Stratton? Present. Mrs. Trapp?
Present.
Mr. McAnamns?
Present. Everyone should have received a copy of the last meeting's minutes.
Mr. President, may I make a statement? I know Ms. Brady has some, and we have some reports that we'd like to do before we actually get involved with the approval of the minutes. May we do so, Mr. President, or Ms. President?
Thank you, Dr. Avano.
The reports of the administration can go now.
Everybody should line up to give the reports on all the administration. The principals and supervisors are going to give quick reports on some of the activities that are going on. Please let me know who you represent.
State your name and who you are.
Oh, I figured that was Mr. Anshutz, about six pages more.
Hi, I'm Mr. Ann Schwartz, the supervisor of Science Program.
And who are you?
I'm Ellen Anderson. The Serebo Science Program is set and competes well with other New Jersey districts when it comes to providing the high-quality, challenging education that enables students to compete successfully in the 21st century. Last year, state testing scores at the fourth and eighth grade levels were ninety-seven percent and ninety percent proficiency respected. Serebo ranks fourth in the county out of twenty-three school districts with its ninety-seven proficiency on the NJF score. These outstanding results are due to the efforts of the K-3 staff at each times. However, even with these outstanding results, we continue to challenge ourselves to do even better than the current year. At the high school, students will take the end-of-course biology test in May and are goals to have equally outstanding scores. Here at Serebo, we offer science courses that meet the state requirements and the needs of the students. At the high school, we offer three advanced placement courses: AP Biology, AP Chemistry, and new this year, AP Physics. Next year, we will offer a new Science and Society course at the high school. The Serebo Languages Program seeks to provide a high-quality, challenging education that enables students to compete successfully in the 21st century. We offer Spanish in grades K through twelve and French in grades nine through twelve. There are world language experiences throughout the district that go beyond the classroom World Languages Program and include such things as special assemblies, Cinco de Mayo, celebration, cultural food assembly, Mexican restaurant visit, clubs, honor society, and health, etc. This concludes my report for this evening. Are there any questions?
Thank you for your time.
I am Mr. Jun Teal, and my name is Brian Caprice. The social studies teachers throughout the district are continuing their work incorporating the newly adopted core curriculum content standards into their lessons. Eight teachers are also working on our Teaching American History grant, and eight others are preparing to become part of this program for the 2010 through 2011 school year. The high school art teachers are busy preparing their students to enter the Middlesex Teen Art Festival in May, while the elementary and middle school teachers are keeping our hallways and classrooms vibrant by posting students' works throughout the buildings. This concludes my report for this evening.
I'm playing Mrs. Mark, Mrs. Liker, and my name is Isanto Teraqua. At tonight's meeting, we are asking for approval of the teachers for the tutorial program for students in grades three through eight. This is a very successful program, which is in its ninth year, helps to prepare students for the rigorous state assessments. This program has been an important factor in Serebo's ability to meet the benchmarks and achieving adequate early progress. We would like to thank the board for its continued support of this program. Today is the first day of the high school proficiency assessment. High school juniors across the state will be assessed this week in Language Arts, Literacy, and Mathematics. Our freshmen and sophomores also begin the New Jersey Proficiency Assessment of State Standards today to measure their progress in Language Arts and Mathematics. Students in grades one and two will take the NJ Pass beginning March twenty-second. Additional tests, additional test assessments will be administered to grades three and through eight beginning April twenty-seventh and continued through March to May twenty-first. The complete testing calendar is available on the district's website. This concludes my report.
I'm very proud of how the elementary schools are doing.
Hi, my name is Michaela, I'm representing Mrs. Riley, Language Arts Literacy Supervisor. Language Arts Literacy is all about communication. In fact, the New Jersey standards for Language Arts include all aspects of communication, reading, writing, speaking, dealing, and listening. As a supervisor of Language Arts Literacy, I develop programs that promote LAL skills and help students excel in all of these areas. There are two ways of looking at the communication process. First, there is information we take in or receive. My hope is that our volunteers and teachers encourage students to evaluate all the information they take in every day. Students should develop critical thinking skills that enable them to judge the worthiness of all the information they receive through reading, dealing, and listening. Second, there is information we put out or communicate. My hope is that our LAL programs and teachers teach students to expect themselves to be intelligent, thoughtful, and creative men. Some of the programs we have in several public schools that are intended to help improve students' LAL skills are a new reading series in grades K through six, a new district-wide summer reading program that promotes a love of reading, newly-written curriculum that engages students in reading and writing, after-school tutorials that helps students who struggle in reading and/or writing, fun literacy nights at the elementary schools and the SUES, a theater arts program in the middle school and high school, extracurricular activities such as poetry club, book club, and school newspaper, and ELL, English Language Learning Program that helps students who are new to the country acquire the English language, various technologies and software programs throughout the district that help to improve Language Arts Literacy skills, Voice-Bird Reading Plus, Read 180, New Field. That concludes my report.
Hello, my name is Mona, and I am representing Mr. Dennis Parentino. The high school we found down is at its final stages of completion. On March eleventh, two thousand and ten, Serebo will be, will be accepting bid for the reproaching of the visitor's side of the bleacher on March twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten. We will be accepting bid for the replacement of the heating branch pipe system at Wilson School. At all schools, the Serebo Board of Education is waiting for state approval on the seventh day of move, of move replacement. That concludes our report. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Very happy how the high schools are down.
Hi, I'm Janie Peavage, I'm representing Mr. Edward Hart. The state testing began today with the eleven-grade students given the mathematics section of the HSPA. The teachers and students have worked hard and prepared for the test. In business, last week, four Serebo, fourteen Serebo students competed in the New Jersey State DECA Conference. The following students placed in the top ten for the state of New Jersey and received medals. Javier Chavet, Principals of Finance, Anush Talvi, Accountants and Appations, Calvin Taisheng, Quick Sir Restaurant Manager, Malvin Perto, Advising Campaign, Demetrius Kanjai, Advising Campaign. Next up, the FBLA State Competition later this month. That concludes my report.
Hello, I am representing Mr. Agnes, and my name is Katie Masterson. The following activities have occurred, or will occur, at the Sampson Upper Elementary School through the use of our new video conferencing equipment, better known as the Tamberg System. A total of twenty video conferences or electronic field trips have occurred since November two thousand and nine. Here are some of them. Smithsonian Art Museum, Young America, Martin the Thirteenth Junior, Big Words, Amazing Adoptions, Columbus Zoo, Character and Luke Garrett, Science, Yucky Body, Transcontinental Railroad, Women's History, Mount Vernon Slavery, Mount Vernon and Martha Washington, Thomas Jefferson and the Birth of Our Nation. Several groups throughout the school have worked on a variety of projects to help raise money and your awareness to several different problems and fights across our community and across the world. Our school ambassadors worked along with Project Good Works to collect donations and money needed to help the survivors and relief workers in Haiti. The teachers of the SUES have raised money to help a variety of groups and their causes, including the following: Breast Cancer Awareness, St. Peter's Children's Hospital, Serebo Parents Sheriff's Day, Alex Ross Chess Club. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Good job, Miss Agnes. U.S. is my favorite school. Mine too.
Hi, my name is Neroli, and I, and I am representing Mr. Skoronsky. Today, the students of Eisenhower Elementary School participated in a Cat in the Hat Fashion Show. During this show, students wore the red striped hat that they made, and the hats were judged in various categories. This wonderful program was developed by the librarian as part of Read Across America Day. This is the third year that the students have participated in this wonderful program. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Good job. I have fond memories when I was in the elementary school.
Hi, my name is Nikita Tula, and I am representing Mr. Burn, Student Counselor. Arlen School is beginning with student council, in which third grade representatives will meet with Mr. Burn. Pennies for peace. During the month of January, Emma Arlen Elementary School collected over two thousand three hundred dollars in spare change for the leukemia and lymphoma society school and youth program. Pennies for peace. Activities in the library are snowballing, beginning with Dr. Soos's birthday on Tuesday, March second, and our annual visit from the Cat in the Hat Super Bowl. Arlen School had their own version of the Super Bowl. The two weeks before the Super Bowl, students were asked to donate a can of soup. They placed the donation in a container that was labeled "Colds or Singles." At the end of the two weeks, students were asked to estimate, estimate how many cans of soup had been collected. Mr. Comerford's third grade class counted those cans of soup. The final number of cans for the Arlen Super Bowl was the colds had one hundred forty-eight cans and the singles had one hundred fifty cans. Two hundred ninety-eight donations truly made this a Super Bowl, a super Super Bowl. And that concludes my report.
Very good. I was extinguished graduate from Arlen School.
Hello, my name is Mina Rizbi, and I am representing Mrs. Fowman. Wilson's theme for this year is Wilson's Twenty-First Century Tuckies. Students will be communicating via webcam with other, with other NJ schools as part of Read Across NJ. Students are using the smart board, making voice threads, and using any model to showcase their work. Writing roadmap, writing roadmap. An online writing program is a pilot project in grade three. Eight teachers will receive the Twenty-First Century Teaching Challenge award that requires a technology component in a classroom lesson. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Hi, I'm Portia. I'm Mr. Barr from the Serebo War Memorial High School. The last portion of the building renovation should be completed by the third week of February, and we should be back in the lower A wing by the end of the month. The wall on their program honoring several graduates who served in the military at the high school is really flattering. To date, we have about fifteen to twenty pictures of graduates or their families to post on our wall. HSPA testing will be taking place March second, third, and fourth at the high school. The class of two thousand and eleven will sponsor our annual variety show on Friday, March twelfth, two thousand and ten, at seven o'clock PM in the auditorium. The Spring Musical will take place on Friday, March twenty-sixth, and Saturday, March twenty-seventh, at the high school auditorium. That concludes my report. Is there any questions?
Very good. Very, I'm very happy that the construction is over.
Hi, I'm Amy Valdez, and I will be her co-pressing, Ms. Cawley. The staff and I have many exciting activities and learning experience planned for our students that have related to this year's school theme, German Teen Goes Green. Throughout the years, we have been concentrating on different ways our students can help protect the planet and make a difference. The children have been actively involved in Going Green, by learning how to help save the environment by reducing trash, creating less pollution, saving energy, using less water and resources, etc. We also launched the Trash-Free Lunch Project. That is, the students are encouraged to start with a reusable lunchbox, pack their food in reusable containers, include a drink in a refillable water bottle, add reusable utensils, and even use a cloth napkin. With our school theme, German Teen Goes Green, we have a three-fold focus each month that concentrates on a specific content area of the curriculum along with the Going Green, Science Strand, Character Education Tree, and Community Service Project. That concludes my report. Any questions?
My name is Samantha Pousert. I will be representing Mr. Preston, Vice Principal of the Serebo War Memorial High School. We are just very busy at Serebo War Memorial High School. We just moved all the staff and students from the trailers to the main building and are preparing to remove the trailers from our site. Students are enjoying success in DCA, bowling, wrestling, step, and basketball. As we wind down the winter season, we are getting ready to start the spring season next week. We are also looking forward to the Vary, Variety Show on March twelfth. This concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Good evening. My name is Kiara Rodriguez, and I am representing Mrs. Goschinsky, one of the vice principals of the Serebo War Memorial High School. My few major responsibilities include the building of master, of master schedule for each school year, great reporting for each working area, developing and overseeing the PACE program, an alternate educational program that provides additional assistance for students who have difficulty achieving longstanding success in traditional high schools. I'm happy to share with you that these are the exciting, that these are exciting times at the Serebo War Memorial High School. The high school construction project is nearing, is nearing excitement. I expect some of the space issues that may, schedule them difficult, may be resolved. The students will reap the benefits in the 21st century technologies that have been had, that have been had during the renovation. The enhanced instructional environments will allow renewed course offerings in two thousand and ten, two thousand and one, this period, and projected to online courses in the near future. The new student information system provides electronic progress reports, support cards, and in the near future, a parent, student, or that will, that will keep parents informed of their child's academic performance. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Hi, my name is Mark Pearson, and I am representing Mr. Michael Leonardo. Tonight, the boys varsity basketball team will play a home basketball game in the first round of the state championships. Coach Sean Keery will be coaching the boys to victory. Mr. Leonardo hopes that the boys use all of their defensive tactics that Coach Keery has taught them throughout the season because of a strong defense, win the championships. This concludes my report. Is there any questions? I hope their hard work is rewarding.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rebecca Chakasian, representing Mr. Squirti, the Vice Principal of the Middle School. The middle school administrators are looking forward to the eighth grade dinner dance, which will be held on May seventh at the East Brunswick Chateau. This concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Hello, my name is Alexis Salina, and I am representing Ms. Mark as the Vice Principal of the Serebo Middle School. The middle school is looking forward to a busy spring as teachers and students are working hard at preparing for the New Jersey assessment. Students are also active after school involved in tutorials, sports, and clubs at the middle school. Our community service club, Impact of Student Council, are doing great things for the school and the community. Students continue to learn from each other as peer leadership is something that we value greatly at the middle school. Students are looking forward to the end of the year activities as students will participate in field days and picnic, picnic. We wish good luck to our eighth graders as they have begun to compare from their high school experiences. That concludes my report. Do you guys have any questions?
Hi, my name is Jasmine Ali, and I'm representing Ms. Duffy. We completed an extraordinary aid cost this week. Extraordinary costs in special education for expenses such as nursing services, speech therapy, physical therapy, and extraordinary aid this year, we spent over eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. That concludes my report. Is there any questions?
Special education.
Mr. President? You should do this more often. There are so many great things going on in our schools.
I agree. Ditto. Everyone should have received a copy of last meeting's minutes. Does anyone have any changes? No.
Mr. President? In the fourth paragraph of the vote of the executive meeting, my, my name was Mr. McCann of Yes.
Ms. Board Secretary? Can you please make the changes?
Could you please make the adjustments?
I would like a motion to accept and file the minutes.
We have a second? Second, second?
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Bakco? Yes. Mr. Michelle? Yes. Mr. Syak? Yes. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mrs. Esposito? Yes. Mr. Gondo? Yes. Mrs. Stratton? Yes. Mrs. Trapp? Yes. Mr. McAnamns? Yes.
Student Council Represent, Representatives, Report.
The Student Council just finished the Read Across America, and we thank students so very much. March Madness is coming up. The, the week of, the twenty-second, the twenty-third, HSPA test is going on for the juniors. This week, the seniors are excited about the volleyball tournament. Also, the second half of the A win is now open and has made the hallway much less hectic, and everyone is excited about it. Parent conferences will be held tomorrow and Thursday.
Thank you. Parent involvement, representative support.
Dr. Alfaral discussed a very preliminary budget. We had no information from the state, so there was no guidance. Budget meetings are scheduled for March second, sixteenth, twenty-third, and thirteenth. The parents discussed what they felt was most important, including all decanarian courtesy busting for elementary schools and maintaining class size. Ms. Sandy Paul gave an excellent presentation on internet safety prepared. Some of the topics that were covered were cyber safety, cyber bullies, predators, and texting. All of the parents enjoyed the presentation.
Thank you for your involvement. Mrs. White, Vice President, District Highlights?
Several high physics students won two trophies on January sixth, fifth, a competitive similar two thousand and ten physics Olympics, which was held at Marlon Regional High School in Newton Falls. Twelve Serebo students competed against students from twenty-two other schools. The students were divided into two teams. One team took second place overall and first place in category. Members included Steven the Sky, Necklace, Sumrita, Dana Quinn, Brianna, Burr, Kojja, Shaw, and Wal the Signe. The second team took eleventh overall. Members included Kyle Schreit, John Karavich, Navar, Lodi, Asphera, Zoris, Khor, Jay, Kaddekia, and Tenay Patel. Serebo is proud of the students, Mr. James Coleman, team advisor, and their outstanding results. In the five years that Serebo has competed in the physics Olympics sponsored by the New Jersey American Association of Physics Teachers, this is the second year in a row Serebo received the second place overall trophy. Participating schools included Serebo, Old Bridge, J.D. Stevens Academy of Math and Science, Marine Academy, and the list goes on from north to south. Congratulations to the twelve students and our coach for all, job well done. Job well done. Senior Skylar Loos has been selected to play with the New Jersey Region Second Orchestra for high school students. The reformage, which was held on January 10th, was well attended and rumors well received by musicians and teachers throughout the state. Skylar was able to exhibit his powers while playing with many outstanding students. Musicians from Area High School, Oakley, and Brunswick, J.B. Stevens, West Princeton, and North Brunswick. Congratulations to Skylar, his family, Mr. Paul Caruso, music teacher, coach, and the Saro-Worm Music Department for yet another outstanding job. It's not over yet. Saro-Worm hasn't heard the last of Keenie Easy. Aside from being selected New York City County's Player of the Year from both the Star Ledger and the Hall of News Tribune, Keen was selected to the New Jersey Top 15 by Soccer Culture Association of NJ, S-C-A-N-J. He was also selected as a regional All-American by National Soccer Coaches Association, S-C-S-S-N-S-C-A. Finally, Keen was selected as an ESPN All-American. He was one of six school players from New Jersey selected to this honor. He was selected as one of the top 100 forwards in America and one of the best 300 players in the country. For this, to yet another Saro-Worm student who wells us. Wow, yet again, to another Saro-Worm student athlete, Jessica Kiritz, for scoring her 1,000th career point in a win against New Brunswick on January 20th. She is the female 1,000-point scorer for Saro-Worm in 28 years. Congratulations to Jessica and the girls basketball program for this outstanding accomplishment.
Another last for me. Dr. Alpharo, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number one, buildings and grounds, lower board. Section two, findings. Approve the guide for standard operating procedures and internal controls. B, disposal of following items as listed. C, participation of the following Saro-Worm Middle School student in the 2009-2010 New York City County Arts Middle School Program. And noted. E, approve the supplemental of the NCOV FY09 final report to the NJPOE. F is on the agenda. The application for special education extraordinary. Any questions in section two? Moving on to section three, personnel, on standby. We have a retirement, medical leave, and unpaid personal leave. Transfers of following professional as noted. And a new employment on the addendum. Honor the retirement of Lana Anderson, Basin. Any questions in section three? Moving on to section four, personnel standby.
Dr. Alpharo?
Yes.
Aren't there any amendments?
Yes, there was one.
Thank you.
A, rescind the action of law. Grant a pregnant review. New employment. Approve professional days as listed. Page six. E, approve the attendance of James Coleman and Tynisha Stokes, science teachers at Saro-Worm Memorial High School at St. Nicholas. We can NSTA National Science Convention. F, to approve the employment of the following personnel for the NJAS grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 tutorial programs as noted. On the addendum, G, H, I, R. A medical leave of absence. To honor the retirement of Karen, so grade one teacher at Truman Technology School. A medical leave of approved the teacher substitute list as noted. Ready? Any questions in section four? Moving on to section five. And I'm going to defer this to Ms. Donovan.
Thank you. The Board of Education requests to approve the first reading of the following policy. Article 3327, relations with minors. The Board will seek to avoid access to professional further expanded security provided by district administration. Any questions? The boys request a review of the policy session. Article 15113, attendance absentee students. The Board of Education believes that the regular attendance of students in each class in school in general is critical to its educational mission for district and the purpose to achieve the 90% of 90% of attendance by the New Jersey quality single accountability. Confident of the unity of instruction is a essential element of student performance that allows students to create opportunities to succeed in achieving their state learning standards and the core curriculum standards. Any questions?
Yes. Page 10, letter A. In what ways are we going to discourage student absences? Through the new student condom.
Code of Condom.
Code of Condom. And B, and letter B, in what ways are we going to discourage unexcused absences? To the same student code of condom. Thank you.
You will hold students accountable.
Page 19. Page 19 again.
Do you still have a question?
Yes.
On page 11, letter D.
Letter D?
Yeah, letter D. It says truancy is a student's absence from all of a part of the school and without the knowledge of the student's parent. A student between the ages of 16 and 16 will also be considered a truancy. Does it also include 18, 18-year-olds?
Yes, it does.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bakco?
They ran out of paper. Bakco, page 19.
The Board has requested to approve policy 6114, emergencies and adaptations for the president. Five drills shall be held at least once each month for all people. Beginning November 2010, there shall be at least one home security drill per month. Any questions?
Has there been a change for the number of five drills in September? We were required to have two drills which have changed in schools or classrooms and the new policy adds one. Change is because now we're required to have to have emergency manholes drills. We can have as many five drills as we wish, but we must at least have one. Are we going to have two now? 15 schools?
Two five drills?
We continue to have two. And one for emergency drills. Thank you.
The more girls there.
Right, Miss Alpharo. Page 21.
The boys request to approve policy 6142.13, which allows parents to have the right to see the HIV curriculum. Are there any questions?
Superintendent? Thank you for your policies.
You're welcome.
Ms. Donovan? I'm going to defer section 6 to Page 1. Page 23 to Ms. Coleman. Warriors, our national leaders, have acknowledged necessity. The Board of Education has requested to approve the following revolution. Warriors, our national leaders, have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experiences in all students' education. And Warriors' march is officially recognized as Youth Art Month. Saro-Worm Public Schools endures the observance of Youth Art Month and encourage to support a quality school art program for children in Saro-Worm Public Schools. Now therefore, Saro-Worm Public Schools hereby endorses March 2010 and Youth Art Month. Any questions?
Are there maybe special projects for March? For art? All schools are going to have art displays. Thank you. Especially in areas.
And that's my favorite school.
E, the Board of Education has requested to approve the first reading of the 2010 National Olympic School Calendar at fall.
Dr. Alpharo, are we going to have an Eno next year?
I hope not.
I hope so.
That's why I answer.
Dr. Alpharo, what are the options? Considering we have already had three studies this year for this responder? We'll wait and see. He'll let it for you.
I hope it's no snow. Any questions in section?
Dr. San?
Yes.
Are we going to extend the year?
We have to contract sadly.
Very standing.
The 180th day as of right now is June 24th. And the 181st day is June 25th. And 182nd day is June 20th, which is the contracted day for the teachers.
So always. Right, Ms. Boom?
Thank you. I actually hope it's partial.
We'll conclude this meeting soon.
Any other questions for section six? I'm glad we're getting out over here next year. Thank you. Moving to section seven, whole curriculum. To approve the Red Cross Club to sponsor a blood drive at Saro-Worm Memorial High School. B, to approve a family and act reading night at the Wilson Elementary School. C, to approve a change in the Truman School PTL family movie night from Friday, March 12th, 2010 to Friday, March 19th. To approve the participation of 18 students from Saro-Worm Memorial High School at the State Leadership Conference at the Vernon Convention Center on March 11th and 12th, 2010. This, to approve Michael Umege to the wrestling coach will be transporting students in his own vehicle according to Board of Education policy R3541.31. To approve the ticket price to the Community Theater and Morestop for approximately 28 grade five students and seven chaperones. To approve the ticket price to the Union County Performing Arts Center in Broadway for approximately 28 grade five students and seven chaperones. And H-I-N-J are on the addendum. To approve the Saro-Worm Memorial High School to hold faculty awards on Monday, March 8th, 2010.
What is a faculty award?
It's a fundraiser. Teachers can come and get some.
Thank you. I'd like to see that happen.
To approve the participation of the wrestling state qualifiers and the coaching staff at the NJSIAA Wrestling Event from Friday, March 5th, 2010 through Sunday, March 7th, 2010, athletic state football. To approve the participation of the swimming state qualifiers and the coaching staff at the NJSIAA Swimming Individual Championship from Friday, March 5th, 2010. swimming individual championship from Friday, March fifth, two thousand ten through Sunday, March seventh. Good luck to all our athletes and coaches. Any questions in section seven?
Mr. Mackinon?
Dr. Thad?
This is from Mrs. Bowden. Do you have your own doctor's hat for Thursday night?
Yes, I do.
She has my mind too.
I have one of my little brothers.
Any other questions?
Yes, let's get off to business.
I have a question.
Go ahead, keep going.
Do we have the names of the state qualifiers? For letter J, Uncle Creepin', and I?
Uh, we don't now.
May I please include their names in the next meeting highlights?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mackinon, have a question?
Yes, Mrs. Bowden?
Dr. Afana, could you please explain on page twenty-five, letter E again? Michael Miggy is transporting wrestling students in his own vehicle according to the Board of Education policy. To where? To a competition in Atlantic City.
Thank you.
Moving on to section eight. We're gonna defer to section eight. There are several field trips to be approved. The board, on two, on, on Thursday, March eleventh, two thousand ten, fourteen students from Serval High, from Serval High School at the LA and two teachers from Sheraton Edison Hotel, Warrington Center to ten fifty, to ten fifty at the LA State Leadership Conference. Students and staff will return to Serval High School on Friday, March twelfth, two thousand ten. On bus, one bus will be contracted from World Resources. Excuse me, Ms. Epple, you can just give a summary, you don't have to read it. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Afana. And a series, and a series of other trips to support the curriculum and go to local. Thank you, Ms. Epple. Dr. Afana, was that fast enough? Awesome. That includes variable.
Any questions from the board members on the agenda?
Dr. Afana, when you're away, your building did a better job than you. Thank you.
It does not go back to green at all.
I'd like to differ. At this time, I would like to open up to the public on agenda items only. Anyone from the public has a question on any agenda, may I? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. I see no one from the public. At this time, I would like a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
I move the superintendent's report.
Second, may I have a second? Second, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Backo? I'm voting no, section, section four, letter I. And yes, there is. Okay, then. I have to leave that alone.
On your own issue.
Thank you, Mrs. Backo. Mr. Shad? Yes. Mrs. Faya?
Yes.
Mr. Card?
Yes.
Mrs. Sustio? Here. Mr. Lombo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stratton?
Yes.
Mrs. Trap?
Yes, I like everything in here.
Mr. Mackinon?
Yes. Are there any items for discuss, discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, go ahead, Ms. Backo.
I'm having fun doing this right now, but, and I've heard that this is, that, that this program is for middle schoolers, but maybe you could try at the high schools, we try this as well.
That's a very good idea.
So noted.
What do the other board members think?
Yeah?
Yeah.
I'm all right, I'm all right with it.
Any other things to discuss?
Mr. Mackinon?
Go, go ahead, Mrs. Thad?
Um, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Mr. Rexesner?
The Serval Board of Education meetings are now being televised on STV channel fifteen, three times per week, Monday, Thursday, and Sunday. I would like to thank Sandy Paul and her staff for the effort in getting this accomplished.
Mr. Lombo, um, I thank you for your efforts. If there's, if there's no other discussion. At this time, I would like to open up to the public. If anyone has a question or com, comment about anything that may properly come before the board, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
On behalf of Mr. Agelise and Mrs. Brady, we would like to thank the board members for giving us this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mackinon, I have a question.
Okay, um, here is all the same.
Amber Walsh and... When will the high school be having tours of the new wings?
That's something that we have discussed. We're going to ask Mr. Brown.
We're gonna have a dedication script.
And we're trying to find the date that works best.
Also, I think that the gym period should be longer because, because it is more exercise and it's fun for the children.
I think that all the fifth graders should have gym together because it's a little annoying, like, I don't mean this against anyone or anything, but it's a little annoying has to, like, having to spend extra time learning the things that we already learned last year in gym, like, games and everything. So I think, like, the, the fifth grader should have gym together and the fourth grader should have gym, gym together.
Dr. Afana, can you address that?
We're looking at that for the next budget. Let's see, maybe here we see.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else in the public?
Mr. Mackinon?
Yes?
I'd like to thank our custodial staff and our maintenance staff for doing such a great job with snow room.
Yes?
I believe that students... I'm Caitlin Esposito, and I live in New Jersey. And I'm worried that the students should have a longer time to eat because we only have a half period of lunch and the lines are very long because we have half the cafeteria at one time and the lines are very long and some students still get the night time to eat. Which school? Samsoe Elementary School?
I agree with that. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Sister Veronica and I live in Serval, New Jersey. Um, I feel that we should have new grammar textbook, just like she said. Except for the little buddies. Because the grammar textbooks at the SUVS in Mrs. Graham's class, is the class that I'm in, are falling apart. My cover is almost completely ripped off.
Like the Dr. Stavoks?
Yep.
Yeah, those are wrong words.
They ripped off because they're probably well-read.
Or well-played with.
Thank you. Well, get to that.
Hi, I'm Ellen Hernandez. I live in Serval, New Jersey. And I think that in all of the schools, one day in the school year, we should all have a celebration of all the cultures and maybe students could write like a paragraph or two about their cultures and all the different things that they do in our country and suggest that we do a little bit for it.
Cultural awareness is very important. Thank you.
I'm Kiara Rodriguez.
I'm Sam.
Samantha, sir.
Who, sir?
We would like to talk about bus packs. Why were they created? Like, why were, like, why do we have to bring them to our, on our backpacks and why do we have to bring them wherever we go?
No more, please.
Mr. Adrian, Mr. Adrian, can you answer that?
It was essential with different times to ensure the safety and loading of all the students.
That is a good answer.
Also, kids are getting on the bus that they shouldn't. They were getting on, like, again from bus eighteen, might be getting on twenty-one or something. That doesn't have bus.
Was the child that did that suspended?
No, I was just kinda, I don't know, I like, no.
It was said that someone actually did that, so were they suspended? We can't discuss people this way. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Adrian?
But a lot of children are complaining they do not want that piece of paper in their backpack.
It's true.
Will it fall out?
Mr. Adrian? I'm very surprised that you remember all of that.
When the bus passes fall out, it gives the student's address and full name. What if it, what if it fell into the wrong hands?
Be sure it doesn't.
But they're all on the ground where they can't find it!
Well played, Samantha.
Actually, it's...
Hi, I'm Neha Ravel.
Mr. Mackinon, I have a comment?
Yes.
The bus passes to be secure, come to the bathroom, to the backpack, so it don't fall off.
I agree.
Still surprised you remembered all of that.
I never lost mine yet.
I also have a comment. Um, if, even if you attach something safe on your backpack, eventually the backpack will, the string or something, what, what is getting holded by, held by, it will get old faster than a bookbag and it eventually, if your bookbag...
Never had a problem, I'll tell you how I do it.
Um, I have another comment?
Yes, go ahead.
When students are waiting on the benches for the bus, um, people can automatically, let's just say they're hanging off a string in their backpack, their kit, they can easily be stolen off their backpack.
All you need are scissors. Well, look into this matter.
My name is Neha Ravel, um, from New Jersey. And I'd just like to say that in the ULIAS, I'd like, I like the video conferences that we had and it would be nice if we had more. They could have more because I haven't been able to go yet this year.
And it should be public.
All students.
We agree. Uh, we're very happy, Mr. Agelise.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mackinon? You have a question? Um, about the middle school busing. Um, why do we have to pay for the middle school busing?
Mr. Adrian, can you answer that?
Unfortunately, according to State Island, any individual who lives around two miles from a school not have transportation to meet from the school. As a courtesy to those parents, to offer a subscription blessing to enable the child to get to meet from the school.
Does that work the same with the elementary schools?
No.
Thank you.
My name is Auntie Badi Digo and I was, I have a comment about Eisenhower parking lots. In, they are, my mom, my brother, he goes to Eisenhower School and she has to come a half hour early to get parking space to pick him up. So I think the parking lots should be a little bigger than how far they are now.
Eisenhower continues to be a problem. But the principal has it well in hand and he's very good in directing traffic.
I'm Natasha Sina. I live in Serval, New Jersey. I wanted to ask if, um, for all schools in Serval and Portland, if we could use solar panels instead of using electricity?
Board is looking into that with a serious proposal. Because solar energy is mu, is much more efficient and it would save a lot of money and longer.
But it would cost, um, a little more money than regular electricity.
That is true. It costs more money upfront, but in the long run, we're gonna save a lot of money and we're going to waste less energy. And we're gonna set, set an example about conservation.
I agree about the solar panels.
Well, spin.
Yes, me too.
And line present.
Excuse me, Mr. Mackinon?
Yes?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Please remind the community that we have already hired an architectural firm. That we have already hired an architectural firm. Who's doing the complete feasibility study. To encourage a referendum for solar energy.
You're absolutely right. Thank you.
I have a question. If we were to get solar panels, they cost a lot of money. So if we keep getting, if we get solar panels, because they have, we have really big schools here. So if you have, so if you have solar panels, how will we have, how will we have enough money for school supplies?
Mr. Driandra?
At this point in time, any other district. Have taken on solar energy. And the long-term investment. Has paid for the upfront cost of those panels.
Thank you.
This will be the last single question.
I'm Natasha Sina from Searle, New Jersey. I wanted to ask to get more money for the solar panels. Can we have fundraiser in the school?
That's a lot of cookies itself.
Not really a fundraiser.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, comment, please?
I think the S U V S Elementary School is almost, almost like a college campus. It's very large and takes up a lot of land. I think that solar panels would be really efficient for the S U V S instead of regular electricity.
Thank you for the schools' own hand. Thank you.
Mr. Mackinum?
Go ahead.
I have two questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Backo.
Now that the high school's new cafeteria has opened and uses non-disposable tray stretch for the cafeteria. I would like to recommend that the other schools look into the following two. I would like to request that the business administrator do a financial analysis and present it to the board. You can discuss the benefits of a continuing effort to go green. They may also be an opportunity to save money as well.
That's a very good point.
And my second question is that in the S U V S, we have made, we have, we have, um, some tampering systems. Perhaps, but, but if we, if we can, maybe we can purchase something in the school.
That was purchased through the PTO.
Mr. Driandra, can you look into both those proposals?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
And I have one other question.
Ms. Backo.
Mr. Driandra, have you received correspondence from the Board of Education, Board of Elections?
No, we have not received anything at this point in time.
Mrs. Backo?
Mr. Mackinum?
They were told? That they will get back to us.
Is there a follow-up plan from your last meeting?
At the end of the year. And we had not heard from them. And we give them to the end of the week. And then we're going to call them.
Um, question? We've had, um, many winter days because of the snow. The last, the last snow day that we've had, that was last Friday. Did that, did that day take off of our spring break or one more day was?
Stuck up on him?
Not yet. We have one more day to go.
No, we're not.
Question?
We're spring break.
If we were to have one more snow day, would it be taken off of our spring break or summer vacation? Our spring break.
Thank you. Mr. Carr? Do you have anything from the state?
Yes. The governor will present the state budget on March sixteenth. And everyone involved in education will be watching closely. Tomorrow, two Searle High School students, Victoria Dershey and Jake Webb, will be honored by the Middlesex County School, School Board Association.
That's it. Thank you. If there's none of evidence before the board.
Mr. Mackinum, Miami's comment?
Go ahead.
This weekend, I will be attending. The town hall meeting in Harrison, New Jersey. And hope to bring back better news of state after hearing Commissioner. Of Education speaking.
Good luck. At this time. I'd like to take a motion for adjournment. So move.
Second, second, second. Hold on. Please, do you want to say something, Mr.?
Good evening. I'm Lucy Bloom, the president of the Searle Education Association. And on behalf of the teachers and the support staff who educate and care for your children every day. I would like to say a job well done.
Thank you. I'd like to take a motion for adjournment. So move.
Second.
Second. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Okay, at this time, I, uh, I, again, um, I was looking forward to this meeting all year. And, uh, you guys did an absolutely superb job. And I mentioned Tarahi, you did an exceptional job. And if I'm ever on that show, um, are you smarter than a fifth grader? I'd want her next to me. I really appreciate this. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Mackinum, I would also completely like to thank Mr. Gentile, Mr. Agulies, and most of all, Ms. Brady. This was a lot of work, not only from the students, but I know from the administration and all the teachers at the U E S. This is an excellent job. I want to thank the supervisors and the principals and the VPs for giving all the youngsters something to say. Great job. It was a fantastic meeting. Be safe tonight going home. Thank you.
Mrs. Esteban, I brought candy for kids.
There's cookies.